Good evening, everyone. I'm Richard Botham, one of the strategic directors of the council. The appointed chairperson for this meeting, councillor Tony Bronk, can't be in the room this evening, so I'll kick off proceedings through to the appointment of the vice-chair. At what point I'll ask whoever's appointed to that role to come and assume the role of chair for this evening. So please welcome everyone to the meeting of the Business and Housing Policy Committee. Time is 6.30 on the 21st of June 2022. Please can advise that the open parts of this meeting are being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition to a video recording of the meeting is being made and will be publicly available shortly afterwards. Please can I remind members to speak clearly and remember to use your microphone. In addition, please speak directly into the microphone and try not to turn away when speaking. This will ensure your comments are picked up for the audio and video recording as well as improving audibility in the room. For any members online, as we have councillor Bronk online, please can I ask that you mute your microphone and turn off your camera until you need to speak? And can also ask that everyone ensures that their mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent or switched off entirely. For those of us in the room, in the unlikely event that it's necessary to evacuate the building, the fire alarm will sound. Please follow any instructions given to you by the staff or fire marshals. All fire exits are marked by green exit signs. Please proceed quickly and calmly to the assembly point, which is in Abbey Gardens, and do not use the lift. Can I welcome members of the public to the meeting? We also have three members of TACT with us this evening, so welcome David, Lynne and David. I understand you mainly want to listen to the proceedings tonight, but if it's acceptable to you, whoever's appointed chair will ask if you want to contribute to the housing-related items. You know the procedure, the space to come forward and use the microphone as usual. Finally, we have several officers and members with us this evening, and welcome to you all. So turning to the agenda. Apologies and deputy members. Matthew, can you just confirm?
Thank you. Good evening, members. I had apologies from councillor Scott, councillor Miller, who's been replaced by councillor Horrell, councillor Radcliffe and councillor Bronk, although councillor Bronk has joined us online as an observing member. Thank you.
And can I ask, does anyone have any declarations of interest? If no, then if we can move to the appointment of the vice-chairman for 2022/23 municipal year. And can I ask if there are any nominations for vice-chair? Please. Can I nominate councillor Byrne, please? And do we have a second to defer that?
Second that, thank you.
And do we have any other nominations? Are we happy to agree councillor Byrne as vice-chair? If we may proceed then, and I'll invite councillor Byrne to the front of the meeting, and you can relieve me of my role then.
I'd just like to start with item number four, the chairperson's announcement, and as councillor Bronk is online, I would like him to obviously raise any announcements he has, please.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to apologise for my inability to be there in person. I'm deeply sorry that I'm letting members of the public and officers and fellow councillors down by my absence. In terms of announcements, I wanted to make reference to the minutes which refer to tenants' satisfaction survey results, and that a review of tenants' satisfaction survey procedures will be carried out this year, and maybe something that the committee wants to consider, including in its forward plan, when you come to consider that item. And TACT representatives there, who I might have singled out as giving apologies to as well for my absence, may wish to make any observations on the last one that was undertaken. The other matter that I wanted to bring attention or to attention is that there's a proposal to have a cabinet housing committee. I'm not yet sure how that might affect the operation of this committee, and that might be something, again, the changes that want to be considered under the forward plan. Finally, I would also like to thank, I've misnamed his name, I'm sorry, an official from the Winchester, University of Winchester, who made an approach to me, asking whether or not I or the administration would like to become engaged in any conversations about collaboration regarding the Global Enterprise Week. I'd like to thank the university for making that approach. It has been passed on to the portfolio holder for business and culture, and if contact hasn't already been made, then I apologise, and the administration would like to take that matter forward, and I'm sure the committee might like to consider hearing what the plans are prior to the week occurring in November this year. So thank you for the opportunity to give those announcements, and I'll hand over to the Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bronk. Item, agenda, agenda item number five, minutes of the previous meeting held on the 1st of March 2022, pages 5 to 10 in your agenda pack. Can I please sign this off as a correct record? I'll judge from the silence, there are no disagreements to it, so we shall sign that off as an accurate record. Thank you. Moving on, agenda item number six, public participation. As per previous comments, if members of TACT agree, I'll just check in the user if we can get to each of the housing papers and see if you wish to contribute. Okay, so moving on to agenda item seven, housing services compensation policy, BHP 029, pages 11 to 38 in your agenda packs, please. If I could remind members that we are being asked to review the draft compensation and reimbursement policy in the appendix, and comment on a) the appropriateness of the proposed policy, b) the levels of specific awards, c) any other factors which should be included within the policy. And if I could, if I could hand over to Stephen White, please.
Sorry, it's going to be me, actually.
Andrew Kingston, sorry.
Sorry, Chair. What if possible?
Apologies. Please proceed councillor Ferguson.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you, Andrew. I hope not to steal your thunder in your introduction. I'm pleased to introduce the paper on the housing policy for compensation and reimbursement to the committee tonight. I think it's important at the outset to say, however, that the council's focus is in ensuring that our tenants can enjoy their homes and don't have to experience problems such as contractors missing appointments, heating problems, damp burst pipes, et cetera. But we do recognise that on occasion these things do occur. It's also important to point out the council has always provided some compensation for disruption and loss and inconvenience, but this has been very much on an ad hoc basis determined by officers on a case-by-case basis. In the policy, you'll note that while it does say that all cases will be assessed individually, what the new policy will do is it will provide our tenants with a clear understanding of when they are entitled to be compensated and what level of reimbursement they should expect to find. It also provides a consistent set of guidelines to help our officers in their response to service breakdowns. And it should be noted that it primarily applies to our council tenants, but it does also apply to our leaseholders where communal facilities have broken down and caused them some inconvenience. I know that TACT have been consulted on this paper, and I'm really pleased that we have Mr. Light with us tonight and Mr. Chape as well. I'm hoping that they will comment. One thing in the policy I picked up was they were questioning the level of compensation for missed appointments, but I'm really hoping, Chair, that the committee tonight will talk about that specific issue. But that's what I wanted to say by way of introduction, and I'm sure Mr. Kingston may want to.
I'm not sure I do, actually. You stole my thunder. No, I'm happy to go straight to questions if that's probably better, because I will just be ready to answer, I think.
Okay. Would members of TACT have anything to say or contribute at all?
Yes, in general, we are supportive of the policy. Is that all right? Can you hear? And there was a question about level of compensation from fifteen to twenty-five pounds for missed But fifteen seems quite reasonable, considering that the rest of the money would have to come out from the council's HRA budget otherwise, so the firm would only still be paying fifteen possibly. So in general, we back that decision of yours, that the fifteen should possibly be enough for compensation for missed appointments, et cetera. And the levels for having, going without heating or something, well, that has to be looked at, I should think, you know, to see how long they're out of heating or whatever, or plumbing or something. So that should be looked at on its merit, and that's all I've got to add, really. Thank you.
I think our main concern on the fifteen pounds was if someone had taken a day off work and they were out of pocket, would fifteen pounds cover it in normal circumstances? I know it's an offer, but what happens if someone challenges compensation they're likely to receive at a later date?
Moving on, are there any questions from committee members? Councillor Isaacs.
Just to like to clarify a few things, if that's okay. I noticed that the compensation for issues with re-roofing, I asked this in particular by Ward, we had a terrible time over the winter where residents were left without tiles on in the terrible sort of cold weather, due to a number of issues, but primarily issues with contractual things that had to be redone and various things. I noticed there's no listing for that if that does go wrong, because tenants are subject to who the council are under contract with and can't choose. It's frustrating when they see people across the road who've had it done a couple of weeks and they're four months in and no roof, sort of thing. So it's been a particular problem. I notice it's not listed, it's got a leaking roof, but not when it comes to re-roofing, in particular when they have the concrete gutters removed or repaired at the same time, that seems to be the delay. With heating costs as they are, it was particularly hard for people with children to keep everything going. So I just wondered if we could perhaps have a look at that to see if that can be included. And with regards to the compensation from fifteen to twenty-five, I do feel that if they can prove that they, correct me if I'm wrong for clarifying this, but presumably when they wish to make an appointment, are they given a banding time, or are they given a specific time, like, you know, 6pm? Or is there any flexibility in their rearranging things? I think if they are able to work from home, then that shouldn't be something we should be paying out for if they can do that. If it's something that they can't be, they're not able to work from home and it's a banding thing, then I do think that, you know, twenty-five pounds, if they've got to take the afternoon off, is the least if it's missed, because, again, it's not funny if you're having to rearrange and you can have, you know, it's frustrating and it's income hitting for residents and tenants. Those are the things I just wanted to clarify, so when they are actually, you've got these items here, whether they're giving a specific time, if they've got any flex in arranging their work around the appointments, or whether it's given in a nine to five and they have to take the full day.
Thank you, councillor Isaacs. Is anyone able to answer councillor Isaacs' questions at all, or shall we get back at another point in time? Mr. Kingston?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer it. In terms of appointments, people are generally given morning or afternoon slots. We have a morning slot and afternoon slot, and now we've got a between ten and two slot to try and avoid school runs and things like that, so we brought that in this year with our gas contractor. The only thing I'd say, going back to the, sorry, the other point you made about the roof, we hadn't thought of that, so good point, this is where the roofs are exposed for a long time, is a fair comment. We'll take that away and look at that, because if they have been open for several weeks, which you're implying they have, then it might be that in those circumstances we need to put some sort of temporary quilts across it to reduce all heat loads best we can, which is doing, so fair comment on that. The only other thing I'd say on the payments, fifteen pounds or whether or not they should be more, I think people need to remember that all the money, whether it's fifteen or twenty-five, comes out of the HRA. Because whether these amounts are in contracts or not, you know, we can put them in contracts, it's only in the gas contract at the moment, but any contractor where he has to allow for an element of compensation, et cetera, will build it into his price. The M payer is always the HRA. So it's a moot point in terms of whether or not the value should be fifteen or twenty-five. We only have it in the gas contract at the moment. I wouldn't like to think, I'd like people to think that it's coming from anywhere else other than the HRA at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Kingston. Councillor Horrell, please.
Chair, good evening and thank you. I have a question about compensation payment. I think we've experienced in the last year, and Mrs. Knight will know, that even though sometimes payments are authorised when people have had difficult situations, we are not always particularly feedy in making those payments, and then residents become even more frustrated that they've suffered the long-term effect of the activity that has allowed them to have the payment, but then it doesn't arrive. So I think there's one piece of the admin here that's probably not visible in this, but we do need to ensure that that is clear, and I'd be keen to understand how that can be tightened up. Having to go to the head of the service to raise that is not ideal. And the second question I have, Chair, is really about some of the repair period working days. Sometimes when things go wrong, they go spectacularly wrong, as Andrew will know, or a problem just won't go away, and it's diagnosed as one thing and then it's another and another. But particularly the lack of water and heating in the more winter/autumn months, I think, is of concern. And although we've got a one day in the October/May period, I question actually whether that is a number that we're able to adhere to and whether that is a reality we're experiencing, because I personally doubt with some cases where that has been substantially different. So I welcome the chance to review the timescales, but I'm just questioning how real they are, what our actuals have been, and also then the question about payment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. I'm sure that everyone appreciates over the last couple of years, it's been exceptionally tough on officers and staff of the council, who've worked exceptionally hard, and that on occasions there may well have been some dates where it may have been missed or payments that are late, but obviously we have been living in rather exceptional times, but as we are moving out of this phase now, I'm sure that things will improve. But obviously, if anyone is able to answer councillor Horrell or provide a statement, I would welcome them to step forward, please.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I suppose all I would say on your first point is, I totally agree, I mean, the whole thing should be quick and efficient, and it's not. So I think some of the examples you might have experienced, they should have been a lot quicker, they shouldn't need Julie to authorise or anyone else, or they shouldn't not get authorised because I'm away or Steve's away. Totally agree, it's crazy, you know. And one of the things I've written here, you know, officers need to be given the tools, delegated authority to get on with this, you know. Most of these payments are going to be quite small anyway, it's about, you know, being proportionate in terms of risk, you know, not Steve authorises it or I authorises it. You know, we're authorising hundreds of thousands of pounds each week on repairs, so is a compensation payment really in terms of risk? I suggest not. I wasn't quite clear on your second point. Is that one of the periods within the policy in terms of how quickly jobs are done?
May I?
Please.
Terrified, Mr. Kingston.
Please do.
Thank you. So yes, it's about the timescales, and actually, are we hitting those timescales? Because, as I say, when we go, when things are not met in those timescales, they go spectacularly. And, sorry, if I may, Chair, I welcome Mr. Kingston's point about payments. Your response is absolutely on the money, we action that, that would be excellent. Thank you.
In terms of the timescales, again, I'm assuming it's to do with the right to repair and the qualifying times, which generally, as an authority, we're quicker than these. But I would accept, when you say they go wrong, they go spectacularly wrong, that's quite often the case, you know. We do have a lot of repairs, vast majority go well and to the plan, but you find that the one that goes wrong then keeps going wrong. So, yeah, I can't state specifics, but I suppose from where Steve and I sit, you know, we do try and emphasise to contractors to hit these timescales. Like I say, most of these timescales which are right to repair were generally quicker than these. These timescales start the day after it's reported, so if you look at the top one, it says electrical loss of power one day, or technically under the Act, you've got two days to put it right. Well, we'd expect to be to the same day and putting it right the same day. So, yes, I fully agree with what you said, you know, we need to make the periods as slick as we can and as quick as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Kingston. Councillor Chris, please.
Thank you, Chair. So if I could just first comment on, I think if we've had an ad hoc system for dealing with things in the past, and I think developing a policy is absolutely the right thing to be doing to get some consistency and to be able to manage that, and also to manage expectations with tenants, so that it kind of reduces that sense of, well, someone else is getting a more unfair, a better treatment, which is unfair on me and so on, so I think consistency is good there. I've got several questions, I'll just limit it to two which are related to start with. Having a policy is great, but we've got to think about, well, will that policy be well-received or will it kind of only end up causing outrage in the extreme, because it's not? Now, the fact that TACT are here and they've, I think, indicated support is obviously a good thing, but my question really was around, if you could perhaps describe some of the consultation, the depth of that consultation across the number of tenants that we have, so that we get some understanding that this has been well consulted and that when it comes out, it's likely to be well-received. And I guess the second related thing is, what are the plans in terms of communicating the policy across the estate of houses? So there's perhaps two things which are related. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any comments?
Probably take your first question, second question first. Obviously, any change in policy or new policy, we would put in the tenant's handbook and it would be publicised on the website, so people would be made aware of it that way. In terms of the consultation, well, we obviously consulted with TACT on this particular issue, and they are the immediate representative body representing tenants. The next stage for, you know, if we were to consult beyond that, then we're into digital surveys and things like that. So can't see why it wouldn't be well-received, if that's your comment, I would think it will be well-received. And I think the main thing where I sit is, this policy is key to being consistent in our approach. You know, we can't have a policy, I mean, we pay that compensation over the years on that top basis, and we've not really had any issues with it. I mean, generally, people are very grateful and grateful for what we've offered, but you can't have continuation of a situation where it depends on a particular officer. So if they catch Steve on a bad day and he gives him fifty pounds, and next day he's having a good day, it might be a hundred pounds, well, that's crazy. So it's very much to protect officers as well, this policy. But I would genuinely hope it would be well-received.
Could I just add to Andrew's feedback there? Just to say that this is really our first draft of this policy as well, and we've come quite early to Business and Housing Policy Committee to receive members' feedback. We did, of course, consult with TACT when the thought of the policy was being thought out, and we've welcomed their feedback, but as Andrew said, this is really our first look at it, so we're really keen to get members' feedback, we'll take that on board. And as Andrew said, we have many other ways of consulting with other tenants. I think we're also very much looking at training our own staff in respect to other questions, and also looking at having a user guide to make sure that we have got consistency of policy. But I would agree with Andrew and think, you know, it is time that we have this compensation policy, and I think it will be received quite positively by both staff and tenants, because there will be a clear procedure and policy for people to follow.
Can I just add as well, within the policy, there is an appeals process, so if we do move ahead with this, and a tenant felt, for example, that the level of compensation wasn't enough, there is a mechanism in there for an appeal to be lodged. Also as well, every year, the intention is to annually review this, so that, you know, we can see the levels of compensation that we're paying out, and we should have the opportunity to compare that against other authorities and housing providers as well to make sure that it is fair. Thank you. Councillor Batho, please.
Appreciate the policy and the way that it's obviously bringing consistency, but also referring back to the previous sort of ad hoc policy. Just wondered how items which are not actually in the schedule will then be handled, how is that going to be sort of addressed? And will there be diminished levels so that there's avoidance of further costs or costs that... And just finally, in terms of larger payments, has been any consideration given to an upper cap above which those large payments will be subject to review by either a senior officer or perhaps liaison with the portfolio holder?
I suppose on your first point there, in terms of, you know, I've written down here that we're developing a policy which will only tick so many of the boxes, you're always going to find cases that fall between two stools in terms of, we should be applying that bit or that bit. So my view on that is we still need quite a lot of officer flexibility and delegated authority to, you know, feel that they can make a decision if it doesn't fall between any particular character category, you know. The different strands of compensation are quite vast in terms of what we've done over the last 10, 20 years, and every case is slightly different, so officers need an element of flexibility within the... So officers need an element of flexibility within this policy to still make a reasoned decision, really, as far as I'm concerned. We don't want to have to keep referring it back to a higher level unnecessarily, because this is about trying to satisfy tenants' needs quickly and effectively and just getting on with it. And hopefully, both parties are happy with that. Yes, it will get close, but there will still be lots of gaps, I would suggest, in terms of what might come up and how we would apply it.
What was your second question?
In terms then of any larger payments, mechanism is there for approving or authorising or reviewing those payments?
At the moment, I mean, Steve might correct me, I don't think we've made any payments over £1,000 in all the time I've been here, which is a very long time. And again, I wouldn't, my own view is, I wouldn't want an upper cap to say if it's above £1,000, it should go to Gillie, because I don't, really don't think that's necessary. It's an unnecessary bureaucratic, you know, in terms of, you know, we're issuing repair works, hundreds of thousands of pounds each week. So in terms of officer responsibility, I don't see there's any benefit in referring that up to a higher level unless it was extremely high or extremely unusual, or any distance away from the policy, in which case, I suppose if it was like, not in line with the policy, then we would refer it up to Gillie or Richard and say, are you happy with this?
If I can add as well, for payments to be made, they have to be made through the council's payment system, financials. And there are limits in there as well for authorisation for payments. So, for example, if we had one of an excessive value, it would have to go to Andrew to authorise anyway, so that outside of the policy, for payments to be made, you know, we have a more robust system, actual mechanism in place for paying people anyway. So that's where the authorisation would come in. One thing I was going to ask, one thing I was going to ask as well, or mention as well, councillor Isaacs specifically mentioned an issue with roofing. Depending on what went on behind that, I would say that whilst it's not specifically mentioned in the policy, service delivery failure is, and it might well be that that would have been, that would fall under that category. Whereas where the policy doesn't mention specific instances, other than the usual ones that we get, there will always be areas that it, you know, that an incident will fall between. So I would have thought that that would have been picked up as a service delivery failure, or going forward it will be.
Councillor Isaacs, it looks like you want to ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that. Yeah, there was about eight houses, not all that were affected, some that were left through the winter with no roof for a month, with young children, and then others that basically, because of an issue with the actual contractor, a number of them had to be redone. So we had a terrible time with an abandoned toilet that was then left on the green for seven months, which 15 phone calls eventually managed to get the toilet removed and then left the fence. So another five to get that removed. So there's a fair few things, it's now all resolved, but they were not happy, and they did go through a terrible time. For some of them, the worst possible time was increasing costs of heating and absolutely no tiles on their roof, just felt. So is there anything that could be done for them? In relation to, I mean, people aren't aware in team with what went on, but is there anything that could be done potentially, if that is a service delivery failure? They know the houses that were affected in my opinion. I'm wondering, is there anything that potentially could be done?
Suppose you've raised a question then in terms of, is any of it time limited, what we're talking about? Which I don't think, I think there might be something in there about, it has to be claimed within 28 days of it happening. So it'd be difficult to retrospectively do what you're saying, but again, I suppose if people think there should be a longer time limit on people being able to claim under this policy, then we can take that forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, say that this really is an opportunity for us to take on board the comments that you're making, and I think both, all comments made by councillors today are something that's clearly a gap in the compensation policy, if you're not able to identify that and asking questions. So it's certainly something, as I said, really early days, so we're very grateful for your feedback, and we'll certainly make sure there's some inclusion around that, even if it's to explain what that process is.
He's got here councillor Isaacs.
Thank you, Chair. If you are reviewing this in relation to re-roofing, may I ask that you consider a couple of things? The lengths that it would normally take for it to be re-roofed, the actual standard that you require, for example, they came, they took three houses' tiles off and then left them, they went back for weeks, is that acceptable? A tenant would not know, so could you be specific in your re-roofing policy about what you expect as a standard, so that tenants are aware what a failure of delivery of service would look like, and that how and when they can claim for something like this? Because it's just not clear to anybody, and it went on for so long that they were out of the 28 days, because it was a promise of, oh, we'll come back, months this went on for. So it's just would not, these group of houses would not have filtered into that. So I just feel that if we are going to have something as a council, I would urge that we're as clear to everybody as possible, and that they understand what the norm would look like, and how long potentially they would be left without tiles on their roof at any given stage. Sorry.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any further questions from committee members at all? Councillor Creasen.
Thank you, Chair. If I could first just say thank you very much for acknowledging Mrs Knight, that this is first generation of policy, and inevitably, there will be things which, I can use the phrase, will fall between the cracks, and I guess you'll just manage those using the traditional method of ad hoc, you know, look at it and make a decision. The question I have though, the question I have is another specific example, which I believe has got some press coverage recently, which is around, things don't break down regularly, so I'm thinking specifically of the lifts, but that's just an example of something that is currently out there in the community, but there may be other things which kind of keep on happening. How are we going to treat those situations where you've got a repeat problem? And kind of related to that is, with any, when you put financial stuff in it, you can end up sometimes encouraging behaviour which is actually counterproductive, not necessarily in the tenants or in the staff, but in the contractors. It becomes, the right thing to do is kind of do a quick and dirty fix, which doesn't fix it for a long term, but it actually ends up keep on repeating. And I just wonder, you know, what our policy thoughts are around dealing with these kind of things where it just keeps on coming back.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a fair point. I mean, we do get cases where we respond very quickly, then it goes wrong again, and then we respond very quickly and it goes... So on the face of it, it looks like we're responding very quickly, but it's going on and on and on, and sometimes you look back and you think, then you look at the history on our systems, and you can say that the tenants had the problem for the last three months, effectively, stop, start, stop, start. So, again, that's not in the policy, I think it's a fair point. It's almost like a repetitive issue that although we might be responding quickly, we're not addressing the issue. And a lot of this is to do, particularly with boilers and heating systems and diagnosis, you know, Steve is an electrician, knows a gas contract well. We do get issues with diagnosis, you know, some engineers know more than others, and you can end up changing half the boilers sometimes before they get it right, which you probably don't want to hear, and I don't want to hear either, but you know, that's a fact of it. And I think, councillor, the comment made a minute ago about the roofs is, again, a very pertinent one, because people need to know what is a reasonable time span. So in here, we're talking about small urgent repairs like a leaking tap or whatever, or leaking toilet, fix it quickly. But people should be able to expect for a roof, should only be open for two weeks, yeah, probably two weeks as far as I'm concerned. So the timescales you mentioned are totally unacceptable. I'm aware probably of the sites you're talking about, where we finished it all, and then we did the quality checks, and we had all the suppliers down, they said it hasn't been put on correctly, and they got all taken off again. Good in terms of quality checks, but for a tenant, horrendous. So I fully accept that. So these repetitive repairs or stuff that's taking, you know, repairs that are taking longer than naturally should, perhaps we do need to make clear to people that that's what we think is a reasonable timescale. As soon as you're outside of that, then this starts kicking in in different ways. So maybe we need to go to the next level of detail for it.
Thank you, Mr Kingston. Any further questions? Councillor Horrell.
Chair, I have two further questions. One is building on the point that I think councillor Crewe was raising, which is where we have a particular site where the lift consistently goes wrong, it's been going wrong for years. You know, at what point do we say, actually, you know, we need to replace this, or we need to do something differently because of, how many strikes do you need before it bound, as it were? And I'm not sure we're clear, and particularly where they're expensive replacements. I think that would be good. I'm also very conscious that this is very much a, and Gillie, I welcome the fact that you're saying this, you know, working on this together, because this doesn't, this is a great sort of policy, but we need to turn it into a tenant's document that they can grasp really easily as to what the rules of engagement are. You know, you'd be forgiven for getting lost in some of the detail here about which bit do I qualify for? And I think we need to really think about that with the acting, Davies and others, and your new comms person, to actually how we turn this into something that feels really accessible. So Chair, I think the point that's been made about 28 days if you haven't claimed, most people wouldn't really understand that in terms of the expectations of the staff team and the officer team. So I welcome the chance to sort of input to this and try and craft it to be... Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. Any further questions from members at all? No? Okay, I will open, sorry, open up to debate.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the officer team for bringing this and for indicating to us that this is a working document to look at and to ensure that it's crafted in a way that reflects the reality that members and tenants have experienced, and using that knowledge to craft this as effectively. I reiterate the point I made, I think we want to convert this into a tenant-friendly document. And one of the key things that I hear, and I've been attending the TACT meetings here with you and other officers, is that they're often just not well-informed about what's happening. So when something goes wrong, that they're not always kept up to speed. And I think we just want to perhaps here, be very aware of the communication when things, and inevitably they will, because that's life, we will have those hiccups, or if we're able to do it brilliantly, we tend to communicate that. So that comms piece, for me, didn't shine through here, and I think that would be really helpful to perhaps think a little about, based on the feedback that we've had, about information being, who's the person who's telling you what's happening and how is it happening? Is it the contractor? Is it the officer at the council? Who is it and who's to be believed? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. Any further takers? Quiet one tonight. Okay, so councillor Ferguson, sorry, were you about to say this?
I just wondered, Chair, if you had finished, if I might just say a few closing words on this one?
By all means, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the committee for all of your useful comments this evening. I think the officers have obviously heard that there are a number of issues perhaps where we could improve the policies and things that we could look at, the issue of larger-scale repairs like roofing, the issue around repeated failure, the issue about how do we make sure that we communicate the policy in such a way that it's easy for residents to understand, and so that they can interpret it and know when they have a right to claim? I think that's a very good point. Thank you very much to officers, Mr Kingston, Mr White, and Mrs Knight for bringing this policy and all the work you've done so far to put it together. But it's great, you know, it is at the draft stage, there is more consultation to be done, and this policy committee has done a great job in helping to steer us do that. And also thank you to Mr Chaver and Mr Light for coming along tonight to talk specifically about this. I'm keen to see this policy implemented, so that we all have that clarity and consistency, both for officers and particularly for our tenants. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Thank you for summarising the recommendations there and making some very valid points. I think the only thing I would like to mention is, obviously, I know there's been a lot of hard work that's gone into this. I would like to see, obviously, a very plain English and straightforward document that tenants can understand. Obviously, there is the issue of how many times do you repair something before you replace, but obviously, it's a work in progress. But apart from that, yeah, I think generally it's a good document, looking forward to that being implemented. If there are any, no further points, I should like to move on to agenda item eight, please, which is the Empty Homes Strategy 2022-2027, BHP 030, which is pages 39 to 76 in your agenda pack. So first off, we are being asked to review the draft strategy, which addresses empty homes within the Winchester district, and review and comment on the aims and objectives set out in appendix four. With that, I would like to hand over to Mr Kevin Reed, please.
Sorry, sorry, Mr Reed, would you mind if I introduced? Thank you. Sorry, Chair. I just really wanted, again, to introduce this paper to the committee. I think the key thing to point out is that this is actually a refresh of an existing strategy that was running 16 to 21. Again, it's in draft, so we are looking for the committee's inputs and the committee's comments to improve it if we can. Sometimes it's easy when you look at a strategy like this and you see numbers in the strategy to become really concerned about the volume of empty properties we might have in the district. The number has certainly gone up since 2015 to 307 to 402. But in the report, Mr Reed does point out that in an area which is about 250 square miles, that actually is a small number relative to others. That said, it is important to have a policy that's up-to-date, that allows us to address those empty policy properties which are causing blight to a neighbourhood and perhaps have been empty for a very long time. The approach in the strategy is very much a soft versus a legalistic one at present, and at the moment, if I'm fair, Mr Reed, there aren't resources in the team to take that very legalistic approach, and there are only certain remedies that we would have under the law anyway, and they would only kick in after a long time. So it's an important strategy to have it updated. But again, it would be useful to hear the committee's comments on this. Sorry, Mr Reed, if you'd like to add anything.
Yes, I'd agree with what councillor Ferguson has said. This is a follow-on from the previous 2016 to 2021 Empty Property Strategy, Empty Homes. Primarily, it is a strategy which does look at us undertaking light-touch action, expect of empty... Through a three-letter approach, empty properties come to our attention, we send out initially a softly worded letter, and if we don't get a response from the owner, or even if we do get response from the owner and they don't particularly do anything, we send out... and they don't particularly do anything, we send out a second letter, ultimately a third letter. However, with empty properties, in law, the main piece of legislation which we can use is under the 2004 Housing Act. It's called an Empty Dwelling Management Order. And the Empty Dwelling Management Orders are actually undertaken in two phases. And to actually apply for one, the law says that a property needs to be vacant for at least two years, 24 months. Plus, we need, because we need to demonstrate it to a tribunal. Properties have actually also been contributing to antisocial behaviour in the neighbourhood, as well as blighting the neighbourhood. Although we do get complaints about empty properties, and in 2122, we received nine, so not a huge number. Majority of the properties we receive complaints about are problematic. Quite often, owners have long-term vacant properties and they leave them vacant. I don't understand why, but they do. But quite often, they sort of maintain the gardens, et cetera. So neighbours, they wouldn't necessarily know that the property was actually even vacant because it's been kept leased entirely, et cetera. So in respect of long-term problematic empty properties, by that, ones which have been vacant for two more years, it's only really the edmo route, the legal, legalistic edmo route that we can go down. And to do that, basically, we have to present a case in a similar way as if we're going to court, and present it to what's called First Tier Property Tribunal. And we have done one case. That was back in, we commenced it in 2019, in respect of an empty property in Badger Farm. If you looked at the strategy, there's two photos within that. One of how the property looked prior, to us undertaking the edmo, and then one at the end, once we'd actually issued the edmo. We were successful, we went to tribunal, granted interim edmo, followed it up because we basically, it's a very complicated case, but basically, eventually, we issued a final edmo, which gave us the ability to take control of the property up for a maximum of seven years. The property was, because it'd been neglected for 10 years, it had suffered a flood. As a consequence of the flood, the owner had gusted the property and so we had to complete the refurbishment, which we did to a cost of over £50,000. Once the property was refurbished and it's in a habitable condition, we're then able to place a family for intemperie accommodation in the property in order to provide them with a home, and it's been very successful. They're not council tenants. They are in the property as private tenants, on a short, short hold tenancy agreement. We've actually got control of that property for seven years. Rental income, which is, which will be generated over that seven-year period, have us recruit the cost of the works. That works with some properties. Unfortunately, with Winchester, because it is a very expensive area and properties are very, very high. Maybe the case that in future we come across a property which has been vacant for many, many years, may require work to be undertaken on it. Those works, in fact, could be prohibitively expensive. And even if we put a tenant in the property, over a maximum period, we can take control of the property for seven years. Over such a period of time, we may not be able to pay for our money. So although edmos are a good piece of legislation, they are long-winded, quite complicated, and they don't always work. That's the main piece of legislation we can use.
Thank you, Mr Reed. Any questions from Tact at this point? Oh, sorry, quick off the mark there, councillor Isaac. Let's hold and wait for Tact. Tact, gentlemen?
In general, we are happy with the policy and the strategy taken because there's only a certain amount you can do within the current law on empty properties, et cetera. So you, in general, we are happy with the strategy at the moment. Okay?
Thank you. I'll move on to questions from the committee, one being from myself. I appreciate a lot of this is going to be how long is a piece of string? But, and I apologize if you already answered some of this, but what is the timeframe between the first letter, typical, approximate, between the first letter being issued and a property being occupied?
Actually, in respect of the three-letter approach, if the property, we send out those letters to try and encourage, they're basically letters of encouragement, trying to encourage the owners of vacant property doesn't necessarily mean that although we've received a complaint, that that particular property or properties are actually impacting on the property. If the property or properties aren't impacting on the local property, not causing antisocial behaviour, can't go down the edmo route. But as soon as we receive complaint about an empty property, yes, within a matter of days, we send out the first letter. We probably review it for a couple of months. Hopefully, we get a response from the owner. If we don't, we send out letter two, see what happens. If we don't get a response again, we send out letter three. Letter, the third letter, if you can see, because they're in the draft strategy, it's a bit more encouraging, shall we, shall we say? But ultimately, can't really go down the edmo route unless, because we need to demonstrate to the tribunal. You know, local authorities do apply to the property tribunal, all edmos nationally, but they're not always granted. Just to let you know, actually, I did a straw poll survey back in May around my other Hampshire colleagues, and over the last five years, Winchester has only, has been the only local authority to actually do anything in edmos. None of the other local authorities have undertaken any. The only, the only other local authority was Test Valley, whereby they were looking at a couple of repairs, which is another faction local authority can take. But we didn't see that because the owner of this particular property actually sold it. So, you know, as I, as I'm trying to indicate in both the report and the strategy, we will ultimately take enforcement action if it's worth it. On the whole, it's an increasing encouragement approach.
Lovely, thank you, Mr Reed. Councillor Isaac, you were quick off the mark earlier. Have you got anything to ask?
I have, Chair, thank you very much. Sorry about that, apology. I just, I have concerns on this policy. When the original one obviously was written in 2016, no one knew that Covid was going to come along. And for the most part, I get the fact that there are properties, properties that are rented that aren't looked after, you know, loaned empty ones. So I get that. My concern is for the ones that slip through the gap, that this does not fit and that they are being penalised. And I just don't think that's fair. For example, I have a resident who let his property out to a lovely lady with two children. Covid hit. In order for her children to be home schooled, she had to leave and stay with her mother back in the north. That property was then straight into lockdown, couldn't re-rent, get estate agents because they were all closed. When they eventually started to come back and were allowed to come back because bearing in mind estate agents were not classed as essential workers, they were absolutely closed. When they came back, half their staff or majority of their staff were furloughed. And so they had such a backlog of things and properties that they were in the process of selling. But in reality, that whole year was a wipeout. She'd actually, in this instance, ended her contractual obligations early because she needed desperately to get some support from her parents. She was on her own. She lives in a very rural part of our county. No bus service or very limited bus service. So she really needed to get the support. So when it came to eventually, you know, at the end of that year, people were starting to move again, people were taking photographs, bang, into the second lockdown, deload again. So as far as virtual tours, which basically people and estate agents were still doing, I know how many estate agents in our rural community were open. They are members of the Chamber of Commerce, of which I am chair. I am fully aware how many were operating, where and how. And this, so his empty property tax started the moment she left. He could not rent that year. It was physically impossible. It's now still impossible because of the ruralness of it all. Everyone's still working from home, so he's now putting on a sale. My concern is, could we not write something to acknowledge the fact that Covid happened? And that if there is proof that they have done, if it's not in, it's non-kept state, because this one was well-maintained, they're still paying their council tax, but now they're paying double their council tax through absolute no fault. And all they asked when they wrote in was, could you not delay the start of the empty property tax until the end of the Covid year, acknowledging the fact that I actually physically wasn't able to re-rent my property? Through no fault of his own. And, and he can prove under contractual obligations that he tried, under contract, he tried with estate agents. That seems to have gone on deaf ears as far as the council and they've stuck to the policy. I fear that this will go to tribunal and he will fight this. And I think he will win because I'll stand behind him on this because he absolutely could not rent it that year. So whilst I understand if they're vacant properties and unkept and slightly, this wasn't, there's no antisocial behaviour, he's done everything he possibly could, he just could not re-rent it because everything was closed and nobody was viewing. And when they did start to move, everybody had a backlog. So new people were last on the list to come. So I think we need to recognise that, that that happened and there may well be people caught in that. I think there'll be very, very few, but there will be some, I'm sure. And I would just like the council to acknowledge.
Yeah, if I may just respond, I think that really doesn't necessarily come under this strategy, to be honest. I think you're probably talking more about the empty homes premium, which is council tax responsibility. Could you maybe also comment on that?
That's exactly right. That's, that's the bit you were referring to, isn't it? I do see it as part of the strategy, very much part of the council's approach to empty homes. We made a very clear policy decision to apply that premium under the previous administration, I think. And what I'm not able to respond to tonight is exactly how we're treating any potential exceptions. As soon as you get into exceptions, you're on, it can be very difficult ground, of course, because every case will be slightly different. Everyone will come up with a reason as to why they, they should be considered as an exception. We do know the rental market was relatively active through the lockdown period. And maybe reasons for, for your, what we were doing, we were letting our own, obviously throughout that period as well. But, but I accept what you're saying about the, the nature of the property. But what I'll do, Chair, if that's okay, is I'll, I'll discuss that with our revenues, our revenues team and, and come back to you about any potential flexibility that may be there.
Just to add to that, we do recognise that there are exceptional circumstances as well of why people leave their properties empty. And some people have inherited properties, some people may be unwell. Sometimes it's very difficult to identify who actually owns the property. So there is a, a lot of discretion within the policy. And really, the policy is about enabling and trying to help homes, empty homes come back into use because of the, you know, the need for people to have private housing as well. So if we can encourage landlords to work through us with our housing options team and be able to identify tenants that could perhaps fill their property while they're waiting for further options or they're unable to gain tenants. And I think the letters very much use the tool of, of, of council tax as well because it is important that people are aware that there are penalties if you leave properties empty. So, so that is part of our policy of advising of that. But I do think it's, it's very much an enabling policy to try and help those people to bring their properties back into use. And it is only when we have very serious complaints that we then need to take action. And, you know, some of the feedback that we receive are, well, I own my property and I'm not quite sure what it is to do with the council, why you need, why you, you think I should be re-letting my property or selling my property. And so that's why we try very early on to advise that we've got this strategy and we can support in a more enabling way, but also making sure that if things are left and properties do slide, then it is important that we take action because the neighbours of the community are very, very much affected by properties that falling to quite serious disrepair.
Thank you. Councillor Horrell, please.
Chair, thank you. And having been involved in the first iteration of this, I am supportive of the policy. Kevin's smiling at me. And I do think it's incumbent, Chair, on us as an authority, if you've got as many as we do have on the waiting lists for council homes, we know that the private rented sector is hugely expensive and accessing housing in the Winchester district is a tough ask. When you have 409 empty properties, it is incumbent upon us to take some action. My question is, it relates back to the point that we are raising on the taxation piece. We took a decision to wield out the stick by saying it will cost you money if you leave it empty for a significant period, subject to particular issues which obviously tonight's indicated we need to deal with separately. But I do think we need to think about that tool because it indicates in the report that you think that actually did move some from the longer term empty status because of the costs. But the question is, is that a tool that we want to look at again in terms of the flexibility we had? Because it was a council decision to move to the level, but we could move that again, presumably. Mr Botham would advise us. And the other question, I think, Chair, that I, I just want to ask is, in another part of our council business, we realise that we perhaps left things for a little too long and now we're having to employ additional resources, put additional budget in to try and resolve that issue. That happens to be in planning team. I'm just questioning, because I heard councillor Ferguson say, you know, there are limited resources, both in officer terms and maybe cost to fund legal work. But if we don't have that remedy, then people will just think that they can avoid us. Some people do avoid us, don't they, Kevin? They do avoid us. Whatever the letter says, they, they, they dance. And for some communities, Chair, these empty homes are a blight on their community. It's the blight of community. So I just wonder whether we do have to just ask the question, do we need to, rather than saying we can't, there are only a limited number of things we can do if we don't have the resources, should we consider adding some resources or generating resources from perhaps putting up some of the taxation and using that if we're allowed to, Mr Botham, proactively on this? So I'm just wanting us to continue to be active. 409 is still too many and we, as all the work that has gone in, we still need to keep at this, Chair. So a couple of questions there in a long-winded round.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. Mr Reed, any, any question or comment?
I'd just say that as it details in both the strategy, council tax premium can be increased after 10 years up to a maximum of 3%. So hopefully that would be quite incentive to encourage people who bring their property.
Thank you. Councillor Creoson, please.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I just lost my train of thought there. So thank you, Mr Reed, for explaining the edmo legislation and the difficulties around that. I can see that's quite challenging. I want to get a feel for what extent we've got a big problem here or not. Clearly, I'll echo councillor Horrell's words, you know, that 409 properties empties doesn't sound good. And certainly, it's. And certainly it's a bit higher than it was in 2015, and that may well be due to some effects related to the pandemic, I guess, if the example that was given is widespread. But I guess I'm asking a question, which is, have we benchmarked ourselves against other district authorities? You know, if I went, if we went to Eastleigh Borough Council, we went to Southampton, would we find that the proportion of housing stock here that's empty is higher or lower than those other places? Are we red flag, are we in effect red-flagging ourselves? Or are we saying, you know what, it's not bad, but we can still do better? I just want to, so, and that kind of informs that sort of sense of to what extent we should be doing, doing new stuff to try and improve the situation. I mean, there's, I would say it's unlikely we're ever going to get these numbers to zero. You know, there's always a baseline that you're always going to hit, that you can't, no matter how much effort you put in, you're not going to hit it. And any more effort is just wasted effort. So I want to try and get a sense of, you know, are we in the sweet spot? Or actually, do we still have a problem compared with other areas?
No, we haven't benchmarked ourselves. But as you will see from the strategy, it does detail that empty homes are transitional. That figure of 409 is broken down into properties which have been vacant between six to 12 months, 12 to 24, 24 to 36, and 36 plus. So the ones which have been empty for the shorter period of time, that could be due to, you know, they are for sale, they've sold but people have moved out. That could be due to probate issues, which is all being sorted out, et cetera. So in most instances, those properties which are vacant for the shorter periods of time, eventually will move on, they will become occupied because they get sold, probate issues get resolved. And it is ultimately the longer term ones which, in not all instances, but in some instances, do become the more problematic ones. As to where we stand in respect of the number of empty properties compared to other local authorities in Hampshire, as I said, unfortunately I haven't benchmarked it, so I don't know, but I got a gut feeling that we're probably not higher than most of them, we're probably, you know, it's probably a much a likeness across the county area. But I don't definitely know, I'll have to consult with my hat colleagues.
I think it's a really useful point to make, and we certainly did it in the last paper, didn't we, Kevin? We compared all with other local authorities, so I think that's a really important part that we may have missed, and we certainly will need to get into the report, I think, for approval. So that would really help to know whereabouts we sit in Hampshire and how sort of, how common the issue is and who's the highest. I think that'd be really useful, and we could do that through your forum, couldn't we?
Chair, if I could just comment back.
Of course, please proceed.
So I think if I understood you correctly there, in a way, what your numbers show is that actually the situation is better than it was in 2015 in terms of the long-term vacancies, or voids, or whatever the word is. It's actually gone down a bit, on the ones that are the most worrying. And given we've had a pandemic, given if you look at the excess death numbers, it's higher than it would have been in the past, and probate is probably a factor in why you've got some of those higher numbers on the short-term thing. So it kind of sounds like it's explainable, and in a way, the numbers might be indicating that we've actually improved things compared with 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Baffo, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wondered if you could explain the main changes between this and the previous policy, and what the reasons were for those main changes. And secondly, the appendices indicate that the letters that are sent out are sent after the two, five and 10 anniversaries. Is there any other communication going out to the property owners? And if not, is consideration being made to maybe bring these letters forward, and therefore before the anniversary, so they've actually got sort of an indication that there will be a charge increase, rather than it being after the anniversary?
In respect of the letters, we send them out, as I indicated previously. Basically, when we receive complaint about empty properties, and also on a quarterly basis, we receive a breakdown of empty properties from revenues. We've been trying to, well, the aim was to try and send out letters on an annual basis, but for various reasons, that hasn't happened. We undertook, back in 2016, quite a comprehensive survey around the whole district. And tried to visit pretty much every single property which we were in council tax. But then 2019, we sent out a mass, a mass mail-out of letters to empty property owners, and then currently, earlier on this year, we did likewise. Again, in respect to charges, I think you mentioned charges, I don't think the letters, you were implying about council tax?
Sorry, my understanding is that there is then an increase in the council tax.
Yes, there is.
Of 100, 200, 300.
Yes, that's right, that's.
So those are, those I believe are imposed at the anniversaries of the five and 10-year vacant home?
Yes, sorry, that is the case, but that will be for revenues to, they're aware of how long an empty property's been empty. It would be for revenues to decide upon when the increase, the council tax premium comes in. That's not something we'd mind. That is a revenue.
Okay, my apologies for the confusion. It's obviously included in the policy, and therefore I assume that was part of the empty strategy.
Yeah, sorry, as Richard said, the empty homes premium is part of the strategy, and the policy is, as I was asking, slightly misunderstood what you said earlier on. So yes, the council tax premium is a part of the overall policy. It's not actually dealt with within empty housing. It's a responsibility of council tax, effectively.
Thank you for that clarification, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Horrell, please.
Sorry, Chair, if I could just answer the first question. Just between this and the previous policy? Oh, thank you. Apologies, councillor. There's not too much, to be honest. I've tried to make the emphasis more on us dealing with properties which are vacant for too problematic, whether it doesn't mean to say that we won't try to deal with properties which have been vacant for a time than that, because we were. But in lots of respects, the current strategy, similar to the previous strategy, the legislation hasn't changed. Sounds, sets and purposes by legislation under 2004 Housing Act, particularly in respect of EDMOS. The other legislation I mentioned in the paper reports, strategies do compose realistically. The only other piece of legislation which is in full sale, we may, we may look at that. Appropriate to do so, but the main thrust, really, legal point of view, initially the interim EDMO. First tier tribunal, hopefully we'll be able to follow up and find EDMO, take control of the property, if it needed to be renovated, to get it renovated, family in it, and produce home business basically in the district. But I've previously said, not many EDMOS at all get issued nationally. It is quite strict criteria. It is.
I just wanted to add there that it is very much a refresh of our previous policy. So as Kevin says, you know, the majority of the content remains the same, but we are very keen to bring the policy to business housing and policy for a, for common, and really to understand if there is support for the policy. Thank you.
councillor Horrell, please.
Chair, could we just clarify, because I'm about the premium on long-term council tax payments. My understanding is that we went to 100%, we did not take it higher, Mr Botham can clarify. We could do, but we chose not to when we set that amount, just to follow up on councillor Baffo's point about flexibility of that particular measure that seems to have had some impact. Thank you.
Chair, rather than giving an incorrect answer, or an answer that might be incorrect, I'll check that as part of the same discussion with the head of revenues and confirm that. When we implemented the policy, we certainly implemented ahead of national legislation. National legislation is now caught up, so that's the bit I'd like to just check and confirm to the committee exactly what discretion we have and what is actually now part of the national legislation.
Thank you, Richard. councillor Isaac, please.
Thank you. If this is a refresh and an opportunity to move forward, and although it's part of this policy and the financial implications in relation to the council tax, et cetera, if there are problems, issues, could we not factor in that they could, as it's part of this policy, that it can come back to us and not stay with council tax? Because it's part of the empty, you know, empty property, and therefore if there are, like the pandemic, certain situations where it would have been helpful for residents to have come back to this committee, because it's part of this and getting nowhere with the council tax, where we are able to hopefully have a discussion about the spirit of the policy, rather than letter of the council tax, if that makes sense. It's there for a reason, it's a good reason why it's here. I just think there may well be some people that are caught in the crossfire and aren't getting through back to, I don't know about, things announced, but it's been the ethos behind this policy, and that the frustrations, I think, are coming from where they're, it's just staying with the council tax team and it's only coming back to this team. I'm just wondering if there's any way of, if we are revising it just for that year, that there's a link back to this group, or not this group, but in the main policy framework?
Chair, just on that comment, we talked a bit about different teams, and really, the team that delivers any part of the strategy doesn't really matter, it's the strategy that matters. But I will follow up on that particular point in my discussions with the revenues team. If we do have potential flexibility, then it would be perfectly reasonable to bring a report back to this committee. Just consider whether members think that's something that you would want to comment on or influence or recommend a cabinet to consider a change.
Thank you. Any more questions from committee members at all? Okay, I would like to open up to debate. Anyone like to kick off? councillor Horrell, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the officers again for work in bringing this for discussion this evening, and I think we've had a helpful discussion about some of the elements, particularly perhaps the opportunity to use our financial leverage to, on the long-term empty houses, to perhaps add additional pressure here. I do think it's also, would be helpful perhaps to use ward councillors' knowledge of where, although there are 409 on the list, if there are particularly difficult houses, the one on Badger Farm is one that we all lived with for a long time, that was particularly painful for the local community. There are those that we should be bringing to Mr Reed's attention and Mrs Knight's attention. Maybe we could do that, so we get a smaller focus on where the effort really to go. And then I think the question perhaps for the portfolio holder with head of services, just the focus of this policy and the resources, are they commensurate with what we achieve? Are there other levers that we want to pull? And clearly, I hope this discussion has helped to facilitate that discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. councillor Creosin, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think based on what I've heard and what I've seen in the numbers in here, I would say it seems like the long-term trend is moving in the right direction. We'll continue. I mean, I do think it would be helpful to see our numbers benchmarked against best-in-class so that we kind of understand how we're doing. I know it's a fuzzy kind of thing, you won't get exact comparables, so we have to be very careful about that. And inevitably, there might be pockets where there's more problems. But I kind of get the feeling that, you know, things have been well managed, and as I say, we're moving in the right direction, so, you know, I will, you know, support the policy. I think it's good to, good policy, it's obviously gone through one or maybe several iterations, and we are refining it. And I'm a big believer in, you know, iterations, you know, get a new policy out there, iterate it and improve it, so I think that's what I see happening here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anyone else? No more takers? Okay. I'd like to ask councillor Ferguson if she'd like to sum up or make comment, please.
Thank you, Chair, and again, thank you to everyone in the committee for your comments on this policy. I know we spoke a lot about premiums on council tax for empty homes, and actually, there are examples of elsewhere where local authorities are beginning to raise them up to the 300% limit. In Wales, they're looking at a policy that will allow all second homes to have a 300% premium on council tax. So it does feel like perhaps the legislation, as you say, Mr Botham, has caught up, so something for us to look at. And I agree with councillor Isaac that if we weren't thinking to seek a substantial change, it would be good to bring something back to the committee and to have a debate around that. I'd just like to thank Mr Reed for all the work he's done on this refresh. And we can certainly look at resourcing, but it needs to be appropriate to what we're trying to achieve, and also in the light of all the other pressures on the council staff and our financial resources. So thank you very much, everyone, for your comments. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to finish up.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine. Apologies, hold on. Apologies. councillor Wallace, please.
So I have to leave, to apologise, Chair.
No problem.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, Chair. Right, yes, obviously, I don't want to steal councillor Thompson's thunder as we go in, as she talks about this next item, but obviously, one of the, one of the asks of the committee here is to review and comment on the GEDS Action Plan 2022/24. From my point of view, I think it's, I was, got a great load of actions here, a great lot of work to move things forward and to improve both economically and in the green, and reduce our emissions. But one thing I'm struggling a little bit with, and I think is an opportunity for improvement, is to try and capture some of that, what we're trying to deliver in a kind of more metric way. For example, if I look on page 100 at the deliver a sustainable tourism strategy, that one, that action is being marked as complete. And the GEDS outcome is net CO2 emissions reduced to zero. Now, I'm sure that it's not intended that at this point we would have reduced all of the tourism emissions to zero. have reduced all of the tourism emissions to zero. However, it would be great, and maybe, maybe it is there already, it would be great to have a metric which shows that now we've got this strategy in place, this is how we should see the decrease in ANCO2 emissions over the next few years as we try to reach net zero in the district by 2030. So having some of those metrics in place would really bolster it. Similarly, if I, just to pick on another one, I've got a page 103, the example of collaborate with Hampshire on a bus improvement plan. This one is a mark as in progress and one of the actions to be done over the next couple of years. But having been in meetings with Hampshire Council on Transport Forum, we know that Hampshire are struggling with their budget, and it's, they're going to be challenged to even keep the current level of bus service, bus services going for, over the next few years. So how does that, we've marked it green, presumably because we're planning to collaborate with Hampshire on this, but we're not really green from our outcomes perspective.
Councillor, if I could just ask you to keep it concise, please. We do have quite a lot to run through.
Sorry. I'll just about to wrap up. So yes, it was just a way of, there's an opportunity here to try and capture some of that so we can actually see the outcome of these actions captured in some metrics. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. If I could hand over to councillor Thompson and Andrew Gosler, I apologise if I've mispronounced his name.
No, that's correct, Chair.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, I should hand over, please. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chair. And I acknowledge what councillor Wallace has to say. And there will be a set of KPIs produced to monitor progress towards becoming a carbon-neutral district by 2030. So I do take on board those comments. I very much hope that the Green Economic Strategy is no stranger to this committee, because it has been considered on two previous occasions in this forum, 22nd of June and 21st of September, before being adopted and agreed by Cabinet last October. The strategy itself provides a framework and direction to influence the development of the district's economy over the next 10 years, enabling the council's commitment to being carbon-neutral by 2030. Our council plan says that in order to create a vibrant local economy that we all want, that we all want to see, we will grasp opportunities for green growth. And the strategy identifies these opportunities and actions that the council and our partners can take to enable green growth across our district. At that cabinet, a decision was taken to prepare a detailed action plan, and this is what we have before you tonight. And we're now seeking the committee's views on that, on this action plan. In preparing it, you will see that a number of consultation events have taken place. We held a series of meetings within the steering group, who were given the opportunity to feedback on actions they felt were a priority for the first few years of the plan. And this is set out in Appendix Two, Section Two. We also set up a business advisory panel, and in Section Three of the appendix, you can see the outcome of those discussions. Going forward, we will be setting up an implementation group across the council to ensure that the action plan is embedded in all the council's work streams and policies, because it's very much a cross-cutting strategy. And we need the input of all council departments to actually make it work. And the business advisory panel will engage with the wider business community to make sure that the aims and objectives of the strategy are being met with our partners out there in the wider community. You may also have seen that we are currently advertising for two additional posts, a Business Growth Officer and a Culture and Creative Sector Development Officer to help with job creation, particularly in the green and creative sectors, something that, as you all know, it's certainly in our plans for Central Winchester, we hope to create a really vibrant, creative sector within that, that part of the city. So looking ahead, I believe that this action plan won't just sit on the shelf, but will be adapted as necessary over the years. And it shows a real commitment to embed our plan to become carbon-neutral by 2030. It provides the structure to enable this to happen across all departments of the council, as well as working with our partners. And I welcome the committee's views on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. And just to sort of add to some of the points that were made in councillor Thompson's opening words. In terms of resourcing streams, they will also be identified during the delivery of the individual implementation plans as they come forward during the life of the strategy. Opportunities such as the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, etc., will be considered alongside, along with appropriate business justification cases for any project to be delivered through the council's own resources. I also wanted to point out that, as councillor Thompson alluded to, the Green Economic Development Strategy covers across all of our local authority activity, and we have been at pains to ensure that it reflects things, obviously, as a council plan, but also other key documents such as the Winchester Movement Strategy, the Local Plan, Central Winchester Regeneration, and so forth. And then in addition to, as councillor Thompson was outlining, the external collaboration that we have done for the development of the stakeholders group and the business advisory panel, which will continue throughout the life of the, of the delivery of the strategy, and also the first two-year action plan, we've also, as officers, undertaken impact and effort analysis and co-benefit and co-dependency analysis, which have been outlined in the appendices of the paper today, to help underpin and prioritise the first set of actions that we wish to bring forward in this first two-year plan. In terms of the two-year plan, we do want to ensure that this is an agile document and to enable it to respond to demands and priorities and opportunities that arise over the two-year period. We have highlighted three actions that we want to take forward as a priority in the first two years. As we've mentioned earlier, the Sustainable Tourism Strategy, we know that the visitor economy is a key part of the strategy across, a key part of the economy across the district, the cultural strategy, and also the development of business cluster networks as well, to foster collaboration between creative and cultural organisations and businesses in other sectors. We also have noted there are six other priorities that are already underway throughout the plan, and 12 actions are at concept stage. In terms of evaluation monitoring of the GEDS outline, of the GEDS KPIs, and we mentioned earlier about the further development of those KPIs, these will be reviewed and tested as the implementation plans come forward, and the PAC Board will be brought forward to offer scrutiny across this process. The next three-year plans, the next steps beyond this, were developed in 2024, and these will reflect the achievements made in the first two years, along with alignment of the four scenarios that are outlined in the Green Economic Development Strategy, being levelled-up district, 20-minute communities, resilient district, and a vibrant place to do business. And so just in summary, we are asking the committee this evening to note our approach to project prioritisation, to bring forward comments on the action plan proposed, and support the creation of web-based action plan with associated implementation plans accordingly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions from committee members at all? Councillor Kreuzer, please.
Thank you, Chair. I want to congratulate you on taking on such a mammoth task here, Mr Gosler. I think you both, councillor Thompson and yourself, have mentioned that the Green Economic Development Strategy cuts across everything. And I mean, I have some prior experience of working in a business where you're having to try and change everything. And I know how challenging that can be. So I'm not quite sure how to frame this, this question, but for me, making that kind of level of change, we can focus on individual initiatives, and we can kind of say, oh, that one's a good thing, that one's a good thing. But that's like cherry picking off things. And the kind of change that's needed is strategic from the top down, and I don't mean it's just about people, but the whole organisation needs to change. And I'm wondering what the management process is behind the scenes to kind of get behind this and make sure that every function within the organisation is, is embracing the changes that they need to make. Because ultimately, this will be successful, not because necessarily just of your energy and Lucille's backing, sorry, councillor Thompson's backing, but through the whole organisation getting behind it, and the housing team doing what they can do, and the tourism team doing what they can do. So what's the management process behind the scenes that is buying, you know, working with you to kind of integrate these KPIs and the strategies into, into their strategy?
I may start by responding to that, Chair.
Of course, please, we see.
And then obviously, councillors, to add to my response, if required. This is, this strategy, obviously, as you say, is cross-cutting across the organisation and well beyond in terms of external stakeholders. And we recognise the importance of achieving that cross-collaboration. This obviously has full support of all of our strategic directors. Dawn Ady, our strategic director for this particular service, absolutely leads the work to ensure that this is cross-cutting across everything that we do going forward. And right initially, when we developed the brief for Urban Foresight to initially put this Green Economic Development Strategy together, that was one of the key points that we needed to ensure that it was cross-cutting across our organisation and across the district's local economy as well. Councillor Thompson has mentioned, and just to reiterate, we are developing an implementation team within the council of senior officers who have responsibility to ensure that the outputs and outcomes of the Green Economic Development Strategy are within their own priorities and service plans. And indeed, as we've developed the actions and this first year two action, this first two-year action plan, we have met with senior colleagues across the local authority, Gilli, for example, who was here today, in terms of the housing priorities, in terms of the retrofit activities and so forth, to ensure that we are absolutely synchronised in what we're doing. In terms of the governance of that, not only the PAC Board, but a programme board of the Green Economic Development Strategy, has been developed and will meet quarterly, and we will report on that cross-functional activity through that process as well.
Thank you, Andrew. Councillor Thompson, is there anything you'd like to add to Andrew's comments?
Well, no, I was just going to say, I mentioned the implementation group that we were looking to set up. And that's, I'm not sure what page it is, my printer hasn't given me the page, but it's under 3.17. It lists all the head of services that will be involved in that group. And I think that will be really crucial to ensuring that GEDS is implemented across the board.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions from committee members? Councillor Isaacs, please.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, thank you for putting a lovely picture of Oxford. Lovely picture of our town, or part of it. My, I mean, I welcome all the work that Economy has done on this and the feedback groups. I've been involved in the plans and the promotional materials, including back into it for the businesses, for the market towns for Oxford. So, you know, from our district, you know, thank you. I've just got a couple of issues that I want to sort of, I'm a bit concerned, well, not me personally, but businesses are concerned over. It's not necessarily something to do with what this plan is, because this is, it's a good plan moving forward, etc. There's promotional, there's a bit more inclusivity in relation to the market towns, which is great. It's more that unfortunately, Oxford's been caught in the crossfire of promoting a greener environment in relation to the lack of grass cutting, but the town's an absolute mess. The businesses are going, well, hang on a minute, you know, we want our town to look welcoming, presentable, attractive to tourism, that's on here as a priority, that the businesses, you know, need, need visitors to go, that's a lovely town, how wonderful, and that there is absolutely a place for reduced grass cutting and light lines, etc. But in the centre of a market town that relies on economy and tourism, they are requesting that it looks smart and tidy for people to attend. And there are still issues this year ongoing, it's still not resolved. And I'm, they have asked me to raise this in relation to this document, that which takes priority? Does the economy take priority in a market town that relies on tourism? Or does the grass cutting, where we've got weeds growing up here in the centre of the market town? It's not good when people say, if I'd bought a house 16 years ago and it looked like this, I would never have bought. So that's one thing I want to sort of, you know, who takes priority? What's the main focus? For the businesses, they want it to look as welcoming as possible for tourists. That's just one thing. In relation to moving forward, you've got affordable housing, 20-minute commute, etc. There isn't enough parking if you don't live here. We've got a lot of workforce living out of the area, some of which come further, many on the high street or further afield in the more hidden areas.
Councillor, could I ask you to get to a question, please?
Well, there's three points. So basically, there's that one, that side, sorry. And the other one is we are going to have a reduced workforce because of a lack of affordable housing, or generally, it's quite expensive to buy. So my request in relation to this policy is, would it be possible to relook at having Oxford in relation to the fact it is a market rural town? Could this group do some work in the potential of having a higher weighting if you have links to Oxford, such as work in relation to housing? I know it's excluded at the moment because we're above 3,000, but we're going to run into a situation where we're not going to have any, you know, we're going to run into an employment situation at some point. So is it possible, is the question, to look at as a work piece, was thinking into this document?
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you for those questions. I'd have to look on into the grass cutting. As far as, we do have a local lettings policy, I believe, and I don't think it would come underneath this, but we do, as far as I'm aware, in our housing department, and when we are allocating council housing, we have a local lettings policy. Am I right, Richard? Or has that been, it certainly has been there previously.
We do have a policy that was considered by, the draft was considered by this committee at the last cycle, but councillor Isaacs is right, for any communities above 3,000, then local lettings doesn't apply. And I think that's the point, that's the point, I think, that you're raising, isn't it?
It is, yes. Just in relation to business employment, they literally are losing their workforce because people from other areas are moving in and they're having to go elsewhere. So it's going to be, I'm not saying imminently, but in the future, it's going to be a huge problem for the town, yeah.
I think it's something that maybe housing need to look at, actually.
I can discuss that matter with you, then, and councillor Ferguson, and decide how we can bring that forward.
Thank you, councillor. Any further, oh, councillor Batho, please, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. The first is, in the introduction to the strategy, it indicates that the GEDS is designed to deliver and to reduce inequalities. I was wondering if you could just explain I was wondering if you could just explain overall, briefly, you know, sort of what the strategy is going to be, that's that particular issue. And the second was, as has been identified, there's a lot of coordination work, a lot of cooperation needed between Worcester City Council and other parties. You identified those aspects of the strategy poorly within Worcester City Council's remit, therefore the ones that would actually be fully responsible for. Therefore, if there are any other situations like cost implications or budget that comes from sources that comes from Elsford, we are aware of which ones that are on those four.
If I can respond to that, Chair, and councillor Thompson, if you'd like to add anything at the end. If I take the second question first, councillor Batho. In terms of actions that were highlighted in the original Green Economic Development Strategy that we, as a local authority, had full control over, was very much featured in our prioritisation process and also featured in our sort of high impact, our impact and effort assessment. So for example, things like, as you see in the first two-year plan, the Sustainable Tourism Strategy, we have a very well-established visitor economy team within the local authority, very experienced, and are well positioned to work across businesses across the district to develop that strategy. So yes, we have looked at particular pieces of work that are within our control, within the prioritisation process, and that's an example thereof. In terms of your question around inequalities, that did sort of feature, again, in our prioritisation process and indeed the actions that have come forward. And so when we sort of look at inequalities, this economic strategy is not a traditional economic strategy that we would have seen a few years ago. It obviously has a very strong sustainable element to it, but it also has social inclusion elements to it as well. So in terms of inequalities around skills and access to services, et cetera, there are a number of different actions that certainly would come as part of certainly the second two, three-year action plan that would address some of those in more depth going forward.
Thank you. Councillor Horrell, please.
Chair, thank you. I have three questions, if I may. One, in terms of the officers in 3.17. Given that we are developing homes and new homes are not under the Head of Service for Housing, how are we capturing that particular group, which obviously has a huge influence on our delivery? Two, it was raised at the scrutiny performance panel. I know it's been mentioned tonight, but the measurements, where are we starting, where are we aiming to go, so that we're clear on the various tasks that we should prioritise and how are we going to tackle that? Is that going to be done as part of the council plan refresh, where a lot of the other metrics are being assessed? And please, could you remind me, who is on the PAC board? Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you, councillor Horrell. In terms of 3.17 and the new homes, if that's an oversight that we have made in order to capture that important area, we will certainly look at that and make sure that it is added in. In terms of the outcomes, the Green Economic Development Strategy did highlight eight outcomes, but as we develop the implementation plans for each of the actions, and particularly the first three that we're delivering in the two years, there will be a suite of KPIs within those actions that will be used to measure, and they will be overseen by the programme board and to some degree, a set of particular measures that the PAC board would oversee. And I would have to refer to Mr Botham in terms of who makes up the PAC board.
Chair, yeah, the PAC board is the Programme and Capable Board, I think is the full title for it, and it's an officer group that oversees the programme and project management in the council, and its main representatives are the leadership team, so the chief executives, strategic directors, and representatives from the finance team as well.
Thank you. I'm going to ask any more questions from committee members? No? Okay, thank. I will open up to debate, and if there is no debate, I would like to ask councillor Thompson if she would like to sum up or make a statement at all. Any debate? Councillor Crean?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thanks for presenting and talking about this, Mr Costello. I have to say, initially, when I read it, I was kind of struggling to get my head around it. Oh, actually, I would like to echo councillor Isaac's comments about that picture in Oxford. Brilliant picture, not only of the coffee shop, but also it's got my bike front and centre on it. I'll stop the flip and see now. I think you both said that the, addressing the green economy question and greening our organisation as a whole is a huge task. It's a massive thing that goes across everything that we do. And I came into this thinking, oh my, how are we going to do this? How are we going to, are we going to drill down into everything that we do? And in effect, end up duplicating the functional committee roles that we do in the more, you know, when we get into the functional areas. So I'm not sure I've fully got this, and I probably need to hear, read it again and have another hearing on a future update on this, but I think I'm hearing that this is more of an overlay strategy that cuts across, cuts across the organisation, has the buy-in of the senior management, and will be putting in place metrics, KPIs and so on, that will enable the functional managers to manage their functions in a way that will achieve the objectives of the GEDS. I think that's what I'm hearing, and that's what feels right to me based on some prior corporate, corporate experience, because otherwise, you're just going to create a parallel organisation which, which isn't, just isn't going to work, we're not resourced for it. So I think, in that sense, it's now starting to make a lot more sense to me, and I'm starting to think, okay, how could, you know, in future, I'll come to this forum, thinking about it in those terms and thinking, how can, what improvements could we make to that, you know, that overlay strategy to try and kind of reinforce the messages? So I think overall, you know, good work, fantastic. Thanks for putting all the work into, to prepare it. Pleased to see that the policy is supported by all the senior managers. I guess there will be some hard conversations about how far and how fast you go, and I think maybe that would be interesting to kind of hear some choices at a future update on this and say, well, we can either go this far or this far in this timeline, or we could just go a little bit further. And that might be about speaking to some of the metrics and saying, okay, you can choose which areas you're going to go fastest in and which you're going to go perhaps a little bit slower. So I guess that's perhaps the only suggestion I might have for the future, but I realise I'm just scratching at the surface here. I don't want to patronise you by pretending I fully understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Andrew, anything you'd like to reply on?
No, just to fully echo that, you know, this is very much, use the word overlay, but a strategy that cuts across everything that we do. We're not at all trying to repeat or duplicate what else is happening across a local authority, and that's why we've gone to great lengths to ensure that it is in harmony with other key strategies, such as the local plan, such as the movement strategy. And I just wanted to very quickly just respond to councillor Wallace's comments, as he said earlier, just to clarify that, for example, the Sustainable Tourism Strategy isn't yet delivered. It's green because it will be delivered in the first two years, and a set of specific KPIs to measure the effectiveness of the delivery of that strategy will be developed as part of the development of that strategy itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Chair. I think everyone has said everything, everything that needs to be said about this. Thank you, committee, for all your comments on it, and also thank you to Mr Costello for his work in producing it. It is going to be all down to probably bite-sized chunks in the end to actually getting some of this stuff delivered. And I look forward to being at the cutting edge of it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Our fourth paper is the Winchester District High Streets Priority Plan Update and Progress Report. So I'm going to hand back to councillor Thompson and Andrew Costello, please.
Right, thank you, Chair. Yes, High Street Priority Plan. This is the final report to this committee, setting out what the council has done over the past year to open up our high streets safely following these restrictions during the pandemic. As the committee will know, we received two tranches of money from the government, the reopening high streets safely, we got a grant of £110, nearly £111,000, followed by a similar amount for the Welcome Back Fund. And this report sets out the action we took and how those monies were spent across our district. Of course, this should, again, this shouldn't be news to this committee, as it's been an agenda item twice during the course of last year. Those members who were at the town forum last week would have noted the presentation by the Winchester bid, which gave us a real insight into what is happening on our high street here in the town. And it's a really good news story. Levels of footfall in Winchester are almost back to their pre-pandemic levels, and the shop vacancy rate is half that compared to other towns in the country. And of course, maintaining the vibrancy of our high streets throughout the district is a really important factor in how residents feel about where they live. And so going forward, it is vital that we build on the work we've already done and ensure that our high streets are flexible to meet the challenging and changing needs, certainly in the retail sector, for example. And the previous agenda was all about encouraging green growth, and our future work on our high streets need to embed those priorities which we've just been talking about. It's also worth pointing out that we will be receiving a million pounds over a three-year period under the Shared Prosperity Fund, which is all about building pride in place. And I know members would have received an email last week asking for thoughts and suggestions as to how this might be spent. So tonight, we're asking the committee to note the report and comment on the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Andrew?
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Just to add some comments to that, those opening words, as councillor Tom said, the full report of activity undertaken has been provided in the papers. However, the headlines perhaps to note would include activities that we've undertaken, including business support, promotion and campaigns, events and vacant window dressing. The committee has received progress reports, as we mentioned at previous meetings, about, for example, Shop Happy, a project that delivered across the district which formed part of our business support activity. In addition, we undertook festive wayfinding on the walking route from the Christmas Park and Ride, aimed at giving a sense of anticipation and supporting footfall in the high street, with the high street retailers. Christmas in Winchester, specific promotional activity, received over 33,000 page views. Our food, our Facebook and Instagram activity generated an audience of over 13,000, and our Twitter delivered over 80,000 impressions. The Visit Winchester website itself has had an increase in website sessions, is up by 35% in comparison to pre-pandemic levels, and our Facebook reach just in the last quarter has increased by 98%. In terms of promotional campaigns, a suite of printed materials was produced, 20,000 destination guides, 20,000 market town guides, that's the first time in a long time a specific market town guide has been produced, and 10,000 individual market town maps. This is complemented by a range of social media campaigns to raise awareness and drive footfall to our high streets across the district. Two key things to point out there was coverage in the Britain magazine promoted Winchester to readership in excess of 155,000, and coverage in the Sunday Times National Press gave exposure to over 1.1 million readers and just under 500,000 copies. Worth noting also in terms of events, again, to drive footfall and particularly during periods of typically low footfall, both the Lights in the City event and the Winchester Outdoor Cinema were very well received by businesses and residents alike. Due to popular demand, the Lights in the City event was extended for a further two weeks. Free tickets for the outdoor cinema that took part in Baskets Yard were all allocated within the first 72 hours of being released, along with a waiting list. And we are currently looking at ways in which we can continue to put on these popular events and be delivered in a sustainable way in future years. And finally, the windows in the vacant Debenhams Building, given its prominent position in the high street in the city itself, was a rat to improve a centre place and visitor experience. And as councillor Thompson alluded, in terms of outcomes, for footfall, vacancy rates and car parking usage were used to monitor success. Footfall is now within 3% of pre-COVID trading conditions in the city. Vacancy rates are within 1%, 1.6% of pre-COVID conditions. Traditionally, the city has always performed particularly well in terms of average national vacancy rates. In April, the national average vacancy rate was 14.4%, and in the city centre, the average vacancy rate is 6.9%. And whilst there has been a net loss in the city of high street retail businesses, we are still attracting new openings, including Oliver Bonus, Giggling Squid, amongst others. And finally, the car parking income is now within 5% of COVID, pre-COVID levels, all indicating that broadly, we are back to pre-pandemic levels. But as councillor Thompson said, the issues of the high street still remain, and so one of the priorities going forward is to find ways to find legacy activities around the high street plan. And one of the particular things that we wanted to gain consideration today was, in terms of what the next steps are, and our recommendation is that the high street objectives going forward, in terms of the recovery and further development of the high street going forward, is adopted into the Green Economic Development Strategy, and in particular, key outcomes such as the Sustainable Cultural Strategy and the Sustainable Tourism Strategy, all of which have key elements that would benefit high street plan objectives. And as councillor Thompson said, the UK Shared Prosperity Fund of £1 million over the next three years would be certainly deemed as a way in which to start to deliver some of those outcomes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew, and councillor Thompson. It sounds like it's had very good coverage and obviously encouraging to hear that the city is bouncing back after COVID. I would like to open up to questions from committee members. Do I have any questions at all, ladies and gents? Councillor Horrell, please.
Chair, thank you. One of the benefits of the way this piece of work has been approached to date is it had the focus on the market towns and the city. My question is, if the proposal is to roll that into the broader strategy, will we lose that focus? Because clearly, this has been helpful to have that level of focus and that specific reporting and actions. In such a comprehensive and wide-ranging document that we've looked at earlier, is that going to be a negative? Is there any reason why we wouldn't continue to ensure that that broader district view is looked at and reported? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Andrew?
Thanks, councillor Horrell. Absolutely, I would completely echo the absolute need to ensure that all of the activity that we undertake, the investments that we make, is district-wide and not city-centric in any way. As we look to develop the cultural strategy and as we look to develop the Sustainable Tourism Strategy, both of which, whilst we're not in the implementation stage yet, but both of which absolutely have ambitions to cover the district as a whole, we recognise the unique elements of our market towns in terms of the offer and the product that we, that they have, and indeed... and indeed the specific requirements that they have. And so we would ensure that both those pieces of strategic work comprehensively covered the market towns as much as did the city and our, and our other wider rural areas as well. And I'll work with the Southend National Park, et cetera, to ensure that our rural areas are covered adequately. We wouldn't look, wouldn't wish for that to be missed at all. I take, take your point on board.
Thank you, Andrew. Councillor Batho, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just like to follow on from councillor Horrell's question or comment in terms of the approach and the coverage of areas outside of the centre of Winchester. Bearing obviously to the, actually, or the, the approach for a 15 or 20-minute neighbourhood, there are quite large areas outside in the sort of outer parts of Winchester, which likewise could benefit from additional, a coverage and additional marketing and promotion. Is there any sort of work to be done on addressing those things?
Yeah, absolutely. We'd be, we'd be looking at, at the district as a whole in terms of the demands and requirements across all areas of the district, specifically through those two strategic pieces of work. So we would ensure that we had coverage and inclusion there. And in terms of a piece of work that, that this committee carried out in terms of digital Winchester, for example, very much also looked at those communities outside of sort of the key areas in terms of digital inclusion. And some of the outcomes of the Green Economic Development Strategy are to find ways in which we can increase the, or bring down the digital spine from basis. So as a prime example, so yeah, we're, we're looking at it across, across the whole piece.
Thank you, Andrew. Councillor Isaacs?
Thank you, Chair. It's more of a comment really to this group and to Andrew and everybody else. I've always found over the last year where, before I became a councillor in, that, to do on, that there was little engagement with the market towns as far as economy and it was a real problem with community inclusion. I have to say, I've always been delighted with this group. Over the last year, it's very inclusive. Everything that's come through, we fed back and we said, look, you know, rather than city, can we have district? Can you make sure that we're inclusive? We are different, can you, can you account for that? And I have to say, every paper virtually, if it's not included, it's been amended and put in. So I would say thank you very much because it's so important to many of our businesses in our area that we have, that we are different and we offer a difference, a valuable difference. So I would like to say thank you for ensuring that happens.
Thank you, councillor Isaacs. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I just wanted to come back on councillor Horrell's and councillor Isaacs' words there. And thank you, councillor Isaacs, for your supportive comments. As the incoming portfolio holder, I have asked the leaders to set up meetings for me to come and meet the market towns and specifically talk about their, their agenda and their, you know, particularly high streets and business, how we might help in, in any way we can. So that, that is on the list to do.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Quaylestan?
Thank you, Chair. I may have actually just heard part of the answer to the question I was about to ask, but I'll ask it anyway. So in, in terms of the distribution of the Shared Prosperity Fund, which I think has been talked about, you've mentioned that there's going to be some consultation with councillors from across the, across the district. What are the other kind of main strands of that consultation? And perhaps councillor Thompson has just referred to perhaps one of those, but I'm just wondering, what are the other main strands that will feed into the decision-making about what areas to put that, what, what, if you like, types of things to, to fund? And also how it's going to get distributed perhaps across the district as well? There may be, there may be other dimensions to the distribution.
I'll just jump in there very quickly. It's a really tight deadline, as always with these government schemes. An all-member email went out last week, I think it was, from Sue Robins, which basically set out the bare bones of the scheme and attached various, at the summary of it. It, it's really broad brush and I'll, I'll let Andrew comment further. But we were talking about this just before the, the meeting started. And the indications are that other local authorities are sort of putting in a fairly high-level and, if you like, broad brush plan to start with, just to secure their, their bit of cash. The money is also very, you don't get the full, you, you won't, you only get a certain amount at, at the beginning, it's phased. And the bulk of the money comes in, in the final year. I think I'm right in saying, aren't I? So it's quite tight and I think in Sue's email to us, members were asked for their comments by 22nd, it's tomorrow. Yeah, yeah. Really tight. Anyway, I don't know whether Andrew wants to elaborate.
Just, just to re- reiterate what councillor Thompson has said, I mean, the window of opportunity is, is slicing is tight. We have to have our proposal into government by the 31st of July. Councillor Thompson alluded to the email that went out to councillors by my colleague Sue Robins earlier on last week. I was presenting to the parish liaison meeting this morning about the opportunities around the Shared Prosperity Fund as well. And indeed, we've made a communication out to our business industry stakeholders as well to get their input. We are putting the draft implementation, draft investment plan together at the moment and developing a prioritisation mechanism. Because I don't need to say, it's already overspent many times over, it's a very modest amount over, over three years. And as councillor Thompson said, it is scaled, so off the top of my head, I want to say it's about 20,000 in the first year, 80,000 in the second year and 900,000 in, in, in the third year. So it's very much loaded towards the end. And we have seen other councils so far bring forward cabinet papers that are very, that are very much a high level rather than detailed projects.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Horrell, please.
Thank you, Chair. In our first round, Whiteley was on our list and we've talked a little bit in this subsequent discussion this evening about the market towns. But where, where are we heading, that relationship with Whiteley, which is a, a key part of the district for many of our wards? But we don't talk about it in the same way. Just wanted to reassure myself that it is absolutely in our prioritisation. And actually, what, we're, we're not seeing some of the same graphs on Whiteley as we are on the market towns today.
Councillor Thompson, please.
Just jump in there. Yes, Whiteley is very much on my radar. And again, it is on the list of market towns, including Whiteley, to go and visit and talk. Of course, it's slightly different because it, the shopping area, I believe, is managed by a private company who have their own way of working, but I am certainly looking forward to it in the near future.
Sorry, and if I can ju- just add to that, that, you know, certainly during the pandemic, these are one of the legacy things, aren't, aren't they? That, you know, indeed, as councillor Isaacs has said, you know, we have seen a far stronger outreach role from the economy team in terms of partnership working. That has come to, could pass to some degree with Whiteley. As councillor Thompson said, we are setting up a series of meetings, which does include Whiteley. Slightly different, but we're looking very much to continue to engage them robustly on the equal level as market towns as much as we can.
And, and Chair, just because of obviously the very significant MDA north Whiteley and therefore that, that growth of housing and, and community in that area, schools, et cetera. From an economic point of view, I think it's a very crucial connection. I suppose I would just reiterate, I think it's, it's one that probably needs some additional work, to your point, to make sure, whether it's in commercial ownership, the retail or whatever, with those other elements going on in close proximity. We need to make sure that that doesn't feel disconnected in what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any further questions or debate? If not, I will ask councillor Thompson if she'd like to sum up or provide comment.
Thank you very much, Chair. Well, I've certainly listened to all the comments that you've made. I would like to reassure everyone that we're obviously not forgetting the market towns or Whiteley. They will all be treated in a similar vein. And I very much look forward to getting out there in the community and, and talking to those towns and doing what they would like to achieve and, and how we could work in partnership with them to bring that back. So thank you for all your comments and thank you, Mr Gosseloe, again, for your work on the, on the plan. And I very much look forward to taking this forward.
Thank you, councillor Thompson and Andrew. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, which is our final paper, discuss the work plan for the remainder of the year. Page 152 shows an initial draft and tonight is the time for us to, as a committee, to put forward suggestions for additional items to be included. We will, of course, review the work programme at each meeting. Members? Please proceed, sorry.
Sorry, Chair, just to make it clear, I did, I have canvassed offices on issues that we feel need to come to this committee in the next cycle. And, and Mr Gosseloe did helpfully highlight a couple of items that are not on the list at the moment. And that's the Sustainable Tourism Strategy, the review of street markets and the cultural strategy. So there's three issues there that we would like to add to the programme, provided they're issues that, that members wish to move forward.
Of, of course, I would, I would like to see those items on the list. I'm sure fellow members would agree with me. Are there any other suggestions or comments to make, members? Councillor Isaacs, please.
Thank you. Just if we could perhaps do the work that we talked about in relation to housing and the, we could put that on the sub-agenda. I know councillor Ferguson's gone, but if we could add that, that would be helpful for a little review. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Isaacs. Councillor Horrell, please.
Chair, unless I'm mistaken, there must be more housing papers that should be coming here. Unless, of course, the root of discussion is going to change with the possibility of the Cabinet Housing Committee. But we have things like the renewal of the cleaning contract and the like, which I'm sure this committee for housing might be interested in. And also, sort of new home strategy and what we're doing, particularly as it pertains to tenders that are coming back and the like, we can afford. And also the planning constraints that are on us at this point. Though I think there are several from a housing point of view that this committee or whichever one is appropriate should be considering. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, yeah, on, on, on those issues, there is the work that the team are doing on the review of the void standard, I think, which was approved by Cabinet. So that, that is, is an issue that we, we'd want to bring forward. And I will discuss with Mrs Knight potential additional papers and, and with the new homes team as well, because they do bring regular updates through this, this programme. And I think they've, they've been helpful to the, to the committee as well.
Lovely. Thank you, Richard. Councillor Quaylestan, please.
I haven't had a chance to discuss this with the portfolio holder, so I may be speaking a little bit too prematurely, but I think there's an estate improvement plan sort of bubbling away in the works and that may well be of a scale that's appropriate. But I'll take advice from the portfolio holder and maybe Mr Botham will say to me, that's a good one or it's not such a good one.
It, it certainly is. It's a very positive programme that's well supported by our, by, by TACT and our tenant group. And actually, a review of how that, that, that didn't progress so well obviously through the lockdown period. So it, it could well be timely to bring that through. So I'll discuss that with councillor Ferguson and agree how we can table that.
Thank you, Richard, and thank you, members. Any other suggestions? Councillor Horrell, please.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Botham's just reminded me actually just mentioning TACT because obviously the new legislation on tenant involvement requires us, I think, to rethink what we're doing. And although we're deemed to be a, a good landlord, the things that we have to do differently, whether there should be a review of that within this committee through the next year. Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, that was a point actually that councillor Bronn mentioned at the beginning, wasn't it? That way, he, he referred to the, the review of tenant engagement. And yeah, I will make sure that gets added to the programme.
Lovely. Thank you, Richard. Okay, moving on. Any further questions or additions? No, not seeing any raised hands. Okay, so final item number 12 is to note the dates and times of future meetings of the committee, which is the 21st of June, which is today, obviously, the 29th of September, 6.30, the 29th of November and the 28th of February. And if there is no further business, I would like to thank everyone for their contributions tonight and wish you a good night.
Thank you, Chair.